Welcome to the February 19, 2013 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Friedman, Manoukian, Najarian, Weaver, Mayor Quintero.
Here. The pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Councilmember Weaver and the invocation by Rabbi Bachman.
Please join with me in our flag, sir.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a free republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Please be standing for the invocation.
Let us pray. Today we gather to give thanks for the gift of life and the gift of this new day, for the blessings of this wonderful city, colleagues, friends, and extended family. We give thanks for generations of brave men and women who secured our liberty. To them we give thanks. In a little over a month, we will be holding elections for the Glendale City Council. We thank those who have served faithfully and beseech God to guide all the men and women who offer themselves for public service and open their lives to scrutiny. Bless them for the days worked, dollars given, miles walked, and the hours of sleep sacrificed by them, their families, staff members, friends, and volunteers. May you all be blessed with a sense of purpose and vision. We invoke the commitments that call us into service and sustain us through times of challenge as well as times of joy: the values of freedom, civic duty, and personal responsibility, understanding and inclusiveness, and the values of dignity and respect for all members of the city of Glendale. As we gather today, let our minds extend beyond these walls to all those who are vulnerable and all who need our support and advocacy: children and families, people without jobs who are struggling to keep their homes, people suffering afflictions of body, mind, or spirit. We extend our thanks for those who help others and those who make our city more livable and safe. May God bless our precious republic and our beloved city of Glendale. Amen.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
The agenda for the February 19, 2013, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, February 14, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Next is presentations and appointments. At 3:00 A. is the agenda preview for the meetings of February 26, 2013.
Ms. Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council for the Glendale Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. We do have a special meeting of the Successor Agency to commence at 3:00 P. M. Director of Community Development, this is regarding the Alex Theater Expansion and Roof Replacement Project. We also have that afternoon special meeting of the Glendale City Council, and we have two items: Public Hearing, Director of Community Development, this is regarding the proposed tropico apartments development, which is to be located at 435 West Los Feliz Boulevard; and Public Hearing, Director of Community Development, this is regarding proposed Hampton Inn and Suites Development to be located at 315 South Brand Boulevard. That evening for the City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 P. M., we have a number of consent items. General Manager of GWP regarding operation and related engineering services for the removal -- excuse me, services for the Glendale Operable Unit and operation and maintenance of the Chromium 6 Removal Facility. Director of Public Works, this is regarding rehab of Glorieta Wells Number 3 and 4 Project, and this is in connection with Spec. Number 349-5-R. We have three items under action: Director of Public Works, Parking Meter Exemption for Military Veterans for Special License Plates. Director of Community Services and Parks, this is proposed operations plan for the use of the Cedar House at Glendale Heritage Park. Director of Community Services and Parks, this is regarding proposed indoor soccer program at the Glendale Civic Auditorium. And lastly, we have a hearing under 9A, which is Fire Chief, and this is the 2013 Annual Weed Abatement Program. And that concludes my report. Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Next, I have a proclamation for the Rabbi and his wife. Come to the lectern, please. It's a proclamation to HABAD, and it reads as follows: Whereas HABAD established itself in 1999 in Glendale, La Canyada, and the foothills communities as a branch of the worldwide HABAD movement, the largest Jewish organization in the world with over 3,500 branches spanning the globe. HABAD is a community-based nonprofit organization whose efforts are rooted in traditional Jewish values, and its programs help people spiritually and physically regardless of background or belief. HABAD embraces a philosophy of study, meditation, and social outreach that combines rigorous academics with proactive community involvement. HABAD hosts a rapidly growing array of educational and social service programs that has made them one of the most dynamic forces in modern Jewish and community life. HABAD has consistently been at the forefront of education and community activism motivated by the profound love for humanity and spurred by the boundless optimism of its legendary leader Rabbi Menachem Sheersen of Blessed Memory. The city of Glendale commends all who have helped HABAD achieve its goals of making this world a place of goodness and kindness. The city of Glendale recognizes HABAD's 13 years of community service to the city of Glendale. Therefore, I Frank Quintero, Mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim Sunday, March 3, 2013, as HABAD Goodness and Kindness Day. And I want to thank you both for all of the work that you do. You, of course, are constantly in the newspaper with your columns, along with some of the other religious leaders and nonbelievers that also get to participate with the Glendale News Press. But it's always a pleasure to be with you. They have six wonderful children. I thought they would bring a few of them tonight, but at least the two oldest: a daughter and a son who are very, very intelligent young people, and I'm sure all of them will be eventually. But anyway, it's a pleasure to have you here in Glendale, and thank you for all your good work. (APPLAUSE)
Next is City Council on Staff Comments.
Mr. Najarian.
Thank you. Over this weekend, I was able to observe and attend an event that made me extremely happy. My son, Alexander, as you may know, attends Occidental College, and he competed in the kayak swimming and diving championships. He was fast enough to win the 100-yard butterfly yesterday, and there he is on the victory stand. He edged out a couple swimmers from Claremont. He not only did his best record, he broke a 30-year-old school record, and he qualified for the NCAA Championship Meet in Houston in a few weeks. So I'm very excited about that, and I just want to wish him the very best of luck, and we'll be rooting for him in Houston at the NCAA Championships in March. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I want to congratulate Alexander. A great achievement. Congratulate him on our family's behalf as well. That is a great achievement. I want to talk about the Trail Safety Patrol again. Over the President's Day weekend, there were four Trail Safety Patrols all over the Verdugos and the Duquesne Park. It was my first participation in the patrol, although we had trained for it, but it was the first one, and we took the trail from Brand Park to the Experimental Forest, which is back and forth is about 12 miles. Going up is harder than coming down, I must say. We picked up some trash on our way up: some plastic bottles, aluminum cans, and I would hope that people would be more careful going up in the trails and take their trash with them back to their homes and to their trashcans and not on the trails. It was a great weekend. However, it was a sad weekend as well in terms of graffiti. We didn't run into it, but some Trail Patrol up in Duquesne Park along the rim of the Valley Trail, Valley Trail, ran across serious vandalism, graffiti that was sprayed on on a boulder in large letters. I guess the individual who sprayed it thought he was making a statement, but he should have taken that at heart, the statement that he was trying to make. And there will be people going up in the trails this weekend, Saturday, to clean it up. If anyone knows or has seen anybody up in Duquesne Park with a spray can or seen the act itself, please let our police department know, because that is a behavior that is not acceptable, especially -- well, that is not acceptable, period. So on a positive note, I must say that when we got to the Experimental Forest, someone had been up there and cleaned it up a little bit, I guess, after my last week's comment about the newspapers being thrown all over the place. So I want to thank whoever that was, either a volunteer or staff member, who went up there and cleaned it up. I will skip the Arbor Day pitch, because I see an Arbor Day individual who's here to make the announcement, so I'll skip that. But I can't help myself. If anyone's willing to donate trees, I think it would be a great service to the community by donating 15-gallon trees, and I would like to see them up at the Experimental Forest actually. But you can donate it for any purpose: an achievement by a son, a great meat, or for any other reason, to recognize a loved one or a friend. So Arbor Day is March 5. I still have to fill out my papers in terms of my contributions, but I will do so as soon as I get the papers. So that is it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and I hope everyone remembers not to litter up in the trails.
Anything else? Okay, I want to talk about my trip to the Orange Line Development Authority route in the south section. The line is going to now be called Eco Rapid, the Rapid Line, so it's not confused with the Orange Line out in the valley. SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, found the money to do a transit-oriented development study, and it starts in Cerritos where the proposed line would start, and it goes all the way to downtown Los Angeles. So on Sunday, we went from station to station, the very south of Cerritos near the Orange County Line, and then Cerritos near the Mall and Auto Square, and then to Bellflower, and then on to Downey, Paramount, South Gate, all the way up to Little Tokyo, and finally downtown Los Angeles. And I actually have all of the renderings and maps and so forth that you all can take a look at, and the staff. The AECOM, that engineering company, is the one that did the study. Very impressive. Number one, the amount of potential riders is somewhere in the 90,000 range. That's a lot of folks, many transit-dependent communities. But I was particularly impressed with all of the different potential locations for these stations around these downtowns where they can build apartments, do more commercial development. So it was very, very impressive, and little by little, this is an organization that keeps moving forward, and thanks to Ms. Najarian, who also helps to fund it. We're basically now working on a $4 million grant. But then the northern part of the line would be Glendale to Burbank, the airport, Santa Clarita. But the southern portion, since the right-of-way is part of what used to be the old Pacific Electric Railway, that's basically -- should get done fairly soon, you know, certainly in our lifetimes. But anyway, I'm going to -- it's in my office, so I'll give you the renderings and so forth so you can get a better idea of what -- how the line is progressing. And then I want to adjourn the meeting in honor of Madeline Sardo, who all of us know the Sardo name there. And the reason we know the Sardo name is that Madeline and Tony had 16 children that grew up here in Glendale. I'm going to read her obituary that one of her sons provided, but they were actually married in Boston in 1931, and that's why all of the kids mostly have Boston accents, Massachusetts accents. But then they came to Glendale in 1955, settled here, and all 16 kids were part of the family business. They've gone on to have -- to continue to stay pretty much in furniture, upholstery, car upholstery, et cetera. So they've been around for many years. She was a wonderful lady. I knew her for a long time. She actually passed away at the age of 95 and a half in her own home, surrounded by her kids. And I had the opportunity to talk to her. I'm not quite sure. My memory isn't as good as hers was, but maybe about a year and a half or two years ago. So she had to have been in her 93, 94, and she was on target. She was talking away and just totally, totally alert. But she did a lot of volunteer work at Glendale Adventist, and she counseled patients with serious illness. She also volunteered with the Women's Committee of the Glendale Symphony, the Los Angeles Symphony. She was, or as a young woman, she played the violin, and her husband was her instructor, was a violin teacher. She was also part of the Sister City Association, did a lot of work with the Mexico and Japan Sister Cities, the Chubby Chase Garden Club, and also taught Christian doctrine at Holy Family Catholic Church. So she's survived by her children. Fifteen of the children are still alive, and she's survived by 80 grandchildren, 150 great-grandchildren, and 16 great-great-grandchildren. So as her obituary says, Madeline and her husband Tony have built a legacy that will live on for many, many generations. That's for sure. But it's a wonderful family, and she was a wonderful lady, so we'll adjourn the meeting in her honor tonight. Any other staff comments? Okay, thank you very much. Next, please.
Next item on the agenda is the Consent Items. 5A is the only item on this consent calendar. The following routine may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may pull this item before a motion is proposed.
Mr. Manoukian is going to pull 5A.
Will the remainder of the consent calendar?
There's nothing else.
Okay. Wait. Will you read 5A? Read 5A into the...
Director of Public Works regarding 2012 Competitive Tree Planting Grant Program, 2012 Windstorm Recovery Project and Youth Employment Plan. At A1 is a motion amending the contract with West Coast Arborists, Inc. for a one-time increase of $11,000. Two is a resolution appropriating $79,000 to fund the 2012 Windstorm Recovery Grant Project. And three is a motion approving the youth employment plan.
Well, I think it's important for the community to know what we're doing. I think this is an important project, both providing trees as well as youth employment. So I think the staff report is warranted.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Manoukian, thank you. This is a program we're very happy and proud to be participating in. Not this past December, December 2011, we had a very serious windstorm that blew through Glendale and the greater San Gabriel Valley and destroyed a lot of trees. We lost about 350 trees here alone, street trees primarily. We did lose park trees as well and private trees, but this grant actually applies to street tree reforestation. So through Supervisor Antonovich's office, we applied for the grant. Council approved us, the application. We were successful in getting that grant. And as you mentioned, Mr. Manoukian, a great deal of this grant has to do with also putting youth to work to help replenish or reforest those trees that we lost. This particular item also has a small amount of money that we're going to have. West Coast Arborists, who's our professional tree contractor, also participate in the very high-traffic and more dangerous areas where we'd rather not have the kids out there planting. These are like medians in the larger, busier streets. But most of this work will be undertaken by the youth through the Glendale Youth Alliance, so we're very happy about that. Tonight is also your -- a recommendation for us to approve that cooperative agreement with GYA so that we can hit moving forward and put those trees back in place.
I'll move the item.
And I'm also very happy that the GYA, I've actually been out with them when they've done these things in the past, and the kids are really jazzed up about it, and they really, I think, you know, feel like it's a positive experience for them. Okay, roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman, Manoukian, Najarian, Weaver, Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
Now that I got Mr. Zer on that topic, one of the trees you planted when you resurfaced East Glen Oaks under the 2 freeway, I think has bit the bullet. It's turned brown while the others have not.
We will take a look at those. Normally, we get a two-year warranty, so you should be able to...
That's what I figured.
Okay, next?
Next is Oral Communications. This is a portion reserved for three-minute events, community event announcements. We will revisit the full five-minute portion of oral communications at the conclusion of all city business. And before you call the first speaker, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an announcement for the Glendale Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, which will be held on March 21, Thursday, March 21, 2013. It's up there on the screen. Hopefully, we can get it up on the screen. And it starts at 6:30 A. M. That's when doors open. Breakfast served at 7:00 A. M. Comments by our own Mayor Frank Quintero, Master of Ceremonies, Police Chief Ron DePampa. And our keynote speaker this year is none other than Pat Boone, a recording actor, a recording artist, actor, Broadway headliner, author. Musical entertainment by a fixture in this community, David Schultz, who will be the soloist. And for the first time, Glendale Community College's Chamber Ensemble, also Aaron Shaw on Bagpipes. Tickets may be purchased in advance at these locations: Beverly Ann Flowers on 1150 North Brand Boulevard, and the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce. For more information, people may call the number on the screen, 626-429-2198. Again, it's a wonderful event, held at the Civic Auditorium now for a number of years. It's the 50th anniversary, and Pat Boone, I don't know if anyone can really pass that up, especially since I hear there may be a duet with the Master of Ceremonies Police Chief Ron DePampa and Pat Boone.
There you go.
I'm only teasing. That is not going to happen.
And 7:00 A. M. again. So in all these years, I've yet to be able to change this to a reasonable hour. It's to be 7:00 A. M. in the Pacific. Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'm sure you'll announce it. He'll announce it again. Okay, we have a number of cards. Leon Mayor, followed by Wesley Chloees.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero. Before I start my three minutes, I'd like to make a very short comment about the Sardo family. I saw the write-up this morning in The Times. Sonny Sardo, one of the children, was a Vietnam veteran combat, Vietnam veteran like our mayor, and he's a member of the Kiwanis Club, and he's been very active in community service organizations.
And he actually was terribly wounded, actually.
And I'm here on behalf of the Friends of the Glendale Library and the library, and we have some announcements to make. First of all, a heads up on tomorrow night. Tomorrow night, Art Cobain, the Great Crescent Valley Flood, New Year's Day, 1934. I passed around hundreds of these announcements, and we might have a great showing, and that's tomorrow night at 7:00 o'clock. Come early to get a good seat. Art Cobain is well-known in Montrose, in La Crescenta, and Crescent Valley. He was a teacher at Burbank High School History, and he's a historian, and he's actually written this book, the first actual book written about the Crescent Valley Flood. Now, we have another event Friday, and this is a book, two short, not a book, two short films by Hyke Hamartsen. Is he a local screenwriter? I don't know, but he's has two, he's known, well-known, and he will screen two short films this Friday at the Glendale Central Library, 7:00. And then to give you a heads up, on March, on March 14, we're going to have Hector Tobar talking about his award-winning book, The Barbarian Nurseries. Now Hector Tobar won the Pulitzer Prize Award some years ago for his book about the L.A. riots. And accompanying him when he talks about his book, The Barbarian Nurseries, will be Gustavo Aralano, who we had at the library. He's a famous Mexican-American nationwide. And Hector is, was, I think he still is, a columnist for the Los Angeles Times. He's well-known, and we like to bring well-known, accomplished people to the library, and he's another one of our famous ones. And One Book One Glendale is an event everybody should get involved in. Our library is open. Come in, look at the information we have, and join the friends so you can find out through the mail all the events we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wesley Chloees, followed by Sharon Wiseman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Wesley Chloees. I am a Vietnam veteran, and I represent the Veterans Welcome Center here in Glendale. We're privileged to have Jason Moon return from his concert last year. On Friday, he will be at the Culver City Veterans Center doing a concert. But this Saturday, February the 23rd, for veterans and family, Jason Moon, singer-songwriter, will have his concert, Trying to Find My Way Home. He tells of his hearing, healing, and journey home after his trauma and struggles that he experienced in Iraq. He's educational, inspiring, and entertaining through his music and stories. This Saturday from 4:00 P. M. until 8:00 P. M. at Wellness Works at 540 West Broadway, he'll have his concert. There will be food and beverages included. Our phone number there is 818-247-2062. And also, on Sunday from 1:00 until 2:30, he will have a public open house with a mini concert. And again, my name is Wes, and you can give me a call at 818-247-2062. And also, with just a little bit of remaining time, my father was with the CCC and helped clear some of the big old heavy rocks that that flood did up in the foothills of this area. And thank you again for this time. Thank you.
That was a civilian conservation corps, for those of you that weren't around. Right, Mr. Weaver? All right. Sharon Wiseman, followed by Steve Pierce.
Mayor Quintero, councilmembers, staff, and those listening, I'm Sharon Wiseman from far north Glendale, and I am here to remind those of you who were here last week and invite any new people to two important meetings in La Crescenta. The first is regarding the proposed 710 extension, and is on Wednesday, February 27, from 7:00 to 9:00 P. M. the proposed 710 extension and is on Wednesday, February 27th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Rosemont Middle School, 4725 Rosemont Avenue, La Crescenta. Please join us to learn how the 710 extension will affect the quality of life in the foothills and how you can take action. That one's hosted by the Crescent Valley Town Council with support from Lockenada Flint Ridge City Council, your own city council, and the No 710 Action Committee. And for further information, you can contact Civic Town Council Member Frank Bayt at B E Y T ampersand A T T dot net. Then the following evening, Thursday, February 28th, the Crescent Valley Community Association will hold a candidate forum for the upcoming April 2nd Glendale City Council election. That forum is at the La Crescenta Library, 2809 Foothill Boulevard, La Crescenta. Please join us for an informal discussion with the candidates. And I'd like to further mention that my understanding is the last day to register to vote for this election is March 18th. So please let anybody who's turning 18 before the election or has moved or wishes to change party affiliation, even though this is a non-partisan election, to know about this and perhaps increase some participation in this municipal election. And I'd like you to also mark your calendars for Crescent Valley Community Association's March meeting, which is Thursday, March 28th, when we will be hosting a candidate forum for the Glendale Unified School District Board of Education candidates. Plus, we'll hear from the two Glendale City Clerk candidates, our incumbent Clerk Arti Kusakian and Stephanie Landrigan. And since I have a few seconds left, also congratulate Alexander Najarian on his record-breaking win. And thank Councilmember Menuchyan for mentioning the graffiti. My husband actually was the Trail Patrol that noticed it, and he's going back up Saturday with the wire brushes to try to get rid of it. So we hope to spread the word that that's, the natural environment is not for people's personal messages. So thank you for your time this evening.
Steve Pierce, followed by Evelyn Horrigan.
Well, good evening, Mayor Quintero and council and staff. My name is Steve Pierce, and I'm representing the community of Montrose and also the Montrose Shopping Park Association. Friday, the 22nd, is the 100th birthday of Montrose, and we're all excited to be celebrating that. And this will be probably the only time we'll see that happen. So we are asking everyone from Glendale to please come up to Montrose for Saturday and Sunday's event on the 23rd and 24th. We're doing a phenomenal amount of things up there. We're going to have a pancake breakfast by the Glendale Firefighters right there on, between Orangeale and Las Palmas on Honolulu. That's going to be Saturday morning, starting at 8:30 in the morning. And we're going to have a horse parade. We're going to have carnival rides. We're going to have storytellers for the kids, western movies. We're going to have a street barbecue that is reminiscent of the barbecue they had back in 1913, only this time will be under the guidance of the Health Department, and so that will be a change. We're going to also be doing movies, western movies. We're going to have square dancing. We're going to actually have square dancing callers. So it's just going to be a real hoot, as they say. And we're asking everyone to please come up. If you're coming from Glendale, just come up the Two Freeway. You can get off at Verdugo Road, come west, and find yourself some parking. And then Honolulu is going to be closed off from Verdugo Road to Las Palmas. And that's for both days. And if I failed to mention, I think I mentioned the Horse Parade, but that's the San Fernando Rangers that are going to be actually leading off our event. So we're asking all of the Glendale council members and all of the residents of Glendale to please come up to Montrose and enjoy this great activity. It's going to be from 9:00 to 9:00 on Saturday, 9:00 to 5:00 on Sunday. And we're expecting a lot of people, so please come up and have a great time. And I want to thank the city council, especially Mayor Friedman, not Mayor Friedman, excuse me, Councilmember Friedman, and also Arti Kusakian. Councilmember Friedman was actually on our committee. Arti is actually going to be one of our emcees for Saturday. And we do appreciate the support. And I want to thank very much Tom Lorenz, Scott Ochoa, and all of the members of Phil, Last Fame, and all the members of the City of Glendale. You guys are just amazing. And the support we get from you when we ask for something is just, where do you want it? And thank you so very much. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Evelyn Horrigan.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, for inviting me to come back again. And hello, council members and people at home. On behalf of...
Your name for the record, ma'am, please.
Sorry. My name is Evelyn Horrigan.
Thank you.
And on behalf of the All Volunteer Planning Committee, would like to invite you, council members and staff and people of Glendale, to join us on, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
I can go to the other slides first, if you want.
No, this is fine. I put my other hat on. As a member of Church Women United of Glendale, we are hosting the World Day of Prayer Service at Salem Lutheran Church on March 2. And as you can see, that it, the program starts at 10:00, but there'll be coffee ahead of time. Salem Lutheran Church is located just above the 134 freeway on Brand Boulevard, North Brand Boulevard. It was, the services been prepared by Women of France. And now, moving on to our Crop Hunger Walk, this is our 18th Annual Crop Hunger Walk. It's March 3rd on Sunday afternoon. People can pre-register online at CWSglobal.org/Glendale/California. You can sign up as an individual walker, as a team leader, or a team member. We would love to have you all come out. Please bring a can of food, a box of cereal, or baby food, or anything that would help the four food pantries that are being supported. They are the, second slide there, Bailey's Human Care in Tahanga, Loaves and Fishes, the Share Ourselves Pantry, the Meals on Wheels program, the vouchers for Meals on Wheels, and also food vouchers for the program at Glendale Community College. It also supports disaster relief, refugee assistance, and poverty prevention programs of Church World Service. This is our 18th annual year. On our first year, Pat Boone was also our speaker to kick off the very first one. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, Mr. Clerk.
Next, we'll move on to action items. At 8A is City Treasurer, regarding City Treasurer's quarterly investment review as of December 31st, 2012. 8A1 is a motion to note and file the report.
Oh, Mayor Quintero and fellow council members. Tonight, we're going to review the city investment portfolio at the halfway point of our fiscal year. Fiscal year 2012-13 is shaping up to be a challenging year for the city portfolio. Ever since the financial meltdown in the fall of 2008, the Fed, and particularly the Fed setting the Fed funds rate at zero in December of 2008, the marketplace that we deal in from overnight to five years has seen historically low interest rates. After four-plus years, I finally acquiesced that rates won't be going up, that the regular announcements from the Fed and the chairman that rates won't be improving until the year 2014 or 2015 is certainly going to happen. But what continually amazes me is the fact that from quarter to quarter, here we are four and a half years in, rates continue to actually fall. Rates haven't bottomed out. For example, let's take a look at the state pool, the Local Agency Investment Fund. Last year, here we had a $40 to $42 billion fund. They invest in the same instruments we invest in. Their average weighted maturity is about nine months, shorter than ours, at 18. And their return was 38 basis points, 38 basis points. Now, to convert that to fractions, that's just about 3/8 of 1%. That means that on $40 to $42 billion, the return was right in the middle of a little bit better than 1/4 of 1% and less than 1/2 of 1%. Since that time, life in the first quarter of this fiscal year has actually dropped 3 basis points, down to 35 basis points. And in the last quarter, ending December, they're down another 3 basis points to 32. So where I thought that the bottom was last year, let's just say that these certainly are challenging times. We can move 400 miles down the freeway and take a look at the L.A. County Pool, a pool that I'm getting more familiar with every day. The L.A. County Pool is twice, is half of what the state pool is. It's got $20 to $22 billion. Their average life is similar to the cities. Again, they're controlled by the government code, and so therefore, their investments are similar to what we invest in, and their time horizon is similar to ours. Their average weighted maturity is 19 months, we're at 18. And last year, they returned 98 basis points. So that's just a tad under 1%. I thought, as I mentioned earlier, I thought last year was the point where we had bottomed out. The first half of this fiscal year, they're returning 0.71 basis points. So they've fallen, taken quite a tumble in just six months. But let's take a look at our portfolio at the halfway point in this fiscal year. The city portfolio, ending balance as of the end of December, was $382 million, an increase of $10 million from the $372 million of the previous quarter. Now, most of that increase can be attributed to property tax dollars that were received in December of $10.4 million. Now, fiscal year-to-date interest earned was $1.8 million for the first six months. And the year-to-date rate of return for the first half of this fiscal year was 0.93%. Now, I think I should mention that these numbers are disappointing to me in the fact that what I'm looking for in the portfolio this year was a return of 1% compared to what we earned last year of 1.08, and a return of around $4 million. Last year, we returned to the city coffers 4.3 million. This year, I'd like to see $4 million return. These numbers are lower than I was expecting, but I still think we've got an opportunity to stay close within those numbers. $4 million in dollars and around 1% for the return. What we have in the portfolio is $40 million that belongs to, it's GRA money, redevelopment dollars, that now are successor agency dollars. So that's $40 million that we're keeping on a short leash, meaning that we're investing very short because we weren't sure of when we would have to settle up with the state. So therefore, keeping that money liquid, the return on those dollars, $40 million represents probably 11% of our portfolio. And the earnings on that is probably 10 to 15 basis points. When those dollars leave the portfolio, when our city manager gets the call from the governor saying, "Scott, one of those redevelopment bucks..."
Check's in the mail.
"...we turn around and either write the check or turn around and send out the wire transfer." What that will do, will release this drag on our earnings in the portfolio. During the quarter, the historically low rates that we're suffering with just encourages bonds that we have to be called. And we had an unusual number of bonds being called, to the degree that the net difference of money moving from the longer end of our portfolio into the shorter end, all of these, was $49 million. So we weren't able to invest, reinvest at rates that we wanted or couldn't place the dollars in the portfolio. And so therefore, we lost the return on just about, well, $49 million at around 1% and above, and basically replaced a bunch of it, or that $49 million, with short-term rates 15 to 20 basis points. We're gaining ground on that in the month of January, which is not reflected in your totals that you see here, because we're presenting this report as of the end of December. In January, corporate America went out to market, and we were able to make a dent in that $49 million by placing $20 million in corporate bonds. We bought up things like some new names, in addition to the Wells Fargo, AT&amp;T, Metropolitan Life Insurance Company, and Honda American. So I think it's those things that we see happening in the second half that'll help us stay close to my targets. I think for the folk out in the audience, out in TV land, I think we can close on probably this note, that the portfolio is very safe, the portfolio is very sound, and the portfolio right now is very, very liquid. I would like to mention too, since we're at the halfway point, to remind people that the City Treasurer's Office, in addition to managing the city dollars, the $382 million, we also have other dollars that we're managing and investing. And that would be the redevelopment or the successor agency dollars, particularly the bond proceeds from the tax allocation bonds of 2010. There's $17 million that we're working with. And the tax allocation bonds of 2011, $42 million. You put that together, it comes out to about $61 million in addition to the $40 million that we're babysitting in the city portfolio. In addition to that, it was, was it in December or was it in November, the GWP water bond issue, I think it was December, early December, that's $32 million. We are managing those dollars. And with those comments, that concludes my report. We ask that the council file a note, the quarterly report.
Did you reach the, we increased the amount of corporate paper that you could buy. Did you reach the max or not yet?
We're that close. The corporate max is 20, and we're at 18, close to 19. So we've got room for just a smidge.
Are there questions or comments?
Under the tombs.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bruck.
Do we need to keep that much liquid cash? Is that what the requirements are, about $180 million?
Well, not the requirement, but waiting on...
Or is that how much we need on a...
No. The liquidity that we have, the biggest drag on, in terms of our liquidity, is that which we're going to have to write a check to the state for, for the dissolution of redevelopment. That's what's killing Mr. Bruck's portfolio. As soon as, you know, the bad news for what used to be the redevelopment agency is good news for Mr. Bruck, and that his yield is going to go up after we can convert some of that cash.
We have $100 million in local agency investment funds, and then money markets and certificate of deposits and commercial paper. It's all approximately $180 million.
Yes, that's right. And you take out $40 million for the redevelopment agency, and then you take out the $49 million that was just put in there during the quarter, and a good portion of that came in in December. And there was no market in December. The last half of December, there is nothing happening. So we picked it up in January and put to work 20 of that million. So we're working.
Into medium-term corporate bonds? Is that where you put it in, January?
Yes, yes. Corporate notes at, I think I failed to mention it, at an average of 1.35%. So that'll help. So that'll help.
That should be a good deal of absorption in the first quarter of, in, in this quarter that we're currently in now, especially with the GWP money.
Thank you.
Well, and while it causes Mr. Baruch heartburn, but in defense of Mr. Bernanke and the Fed, I think the low rates have obviously helped to stabilize the real estate market. There is more corporate purchases, car rates are at all-time lows, so all in all, I think that's what we need for the, for the economy to keep the rates low for a while until we begin to...
That's right, I should be a mortgage banker.
Okay, do I have a motion to note and file?
I'll move A1. Just, just a comment, though. When I used to handle the investments for my credit union, we're so used to being able to be short-term, midterm, long-term, and vary it all around, eighteen months, twenty-four, thirty-six, five years, eighteen months, and now, there's nothing there. Just, I never saw anything like this.
Hasn't happened in our lifetime, at least in my lifetime, I don't know about yours.
Yeah, my lifetime.
I have a motion and a second rule column.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Menucha?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes, next please.
Saffie is chief of police regarding Glendale Police Department crime summary 2012. B1 is a motion to note and file the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of, of council. Certainly Ron and his money are, they're a hard act to follow, but hopefully we'll bring you good news here. So, we, you know, we're, we're very pleased to end the, the last year, 2012, better than, than what we had hoped to, and we want to share a little bit of that crime summary information with you, and, and certainly with the, the viewers at home.
It's the arrow on the right, the top arrow.
On the right, alright. Alright, so we'll, we'll get right in, into this, and there you see our, our Part One crime totals for 2012, and for the violent crime side there on the left, we realized a ten percent decrease, and for property crimes on the, on the right, a twelve percent decrease, for a total decrease for 2012 of, of twelve percent. And, and this is really good news for us because if you recall, early in 2012, we were experiencing some, some pretty challenging crime sprees related to residential burglary, to auto burglary, auto theft, and, and even our street robbery rate. So we were not anticipating finishing the, the year this well, but we're, we're rather pleased to see that over the course of the year, we were able to get some of these trends targeted and abated. So this is a, a chart that indicates where we've been since 2008, and I think it's important to share with you the trend, because when we look back, our last crime spike that we had with Part One crime was in 2008. And since that time, every year, year over year, we've, we've realized a decrease for a total of, of twenty-six percent over this time period. And this is important to note in that this was really through the breadth of the economic recession. And not only that, but certainly significant cuts to our budget and resources citywide. And, and, and then, transposed on top of this was the whole issue of California prison reform, beginning with the release of non-revocable parolees, and finishing, most recently, it's not even finished, it's, it's running strong, and that is with realignment. And needless to say, that's placed tens of thousands of felons out of state prison, back into our county, back onto our streets, and certainly affects our, our crime rate. We implemented over the course of this time period, some very important strategies that I think are working, and I think this trend illustrates that, you know, beginning with geographic accountability through our area command, and, and augmenting that with a real robust crime analysis system. What we tried to do is really create an information-rich environment that literally drives everything we do day in and day out. And then, of course, supporting that with, with, with good technology that, that we've brought in. And then probably more important than, than all of that is, is the relationships with the community and the community partnerships that have so significantly supported our effort. Let me assure you, I've talked to many other chiefs in the county, and their trend line over this time period is heading just the opposite way. So we're, we're quite proud of that, and I'd be remiss if I didn't give kudos to the hard-working men and women of the Glendale Police Department. You know, over this time period, we've repeatedly asked them to do more with less, and they've continually not disappointed. And, and so, you know, we're, we can be very, very proud of our employees and, and the work that they've done here. Let me show you kind of our benchmark comparison, is that against state, cities in the state of over a hundred thousand population, and charts a little hard to see, but you, you see there for the first six months of 2012, as the, the final year has not been published yet, but we're sitting at, at number six. And this is important because back in 2008, we were number ten, and, and concerned that we might fall out of the, the, the top ten safest cities in California, but it looks like we'll be solidly within that number five, six mark at, at the final publication of, of this data. And if, if you look, really, the majority of the cities we're competing against there are really a very different characteristic than Glendale. They're, they're very much bedroom-type communities where Glendale's a very large metropolitan area within L.A. County, and we're sharing borders with, with L.A. City, so I think we can be very, very proud of, of our position within that ranking.
We joke a great deal about the, the resident per capita of police officers in all of those cities that you see one through five, as opposed to, to Glendale. And as the chief points out, when you, you hear those jokes about Copland in terms of Thousand Oaks, Simi Valley, Santa Clarita, Murrieta, and Irvine for that matter, those are places where a lot of law enforcement professionals live out in those bedroom communities. Yet here we are, across the river, surrounded by L.A. on three sides, and yet still more than holding our own, and it really is a credit, as the chief says, to everything that's implemented.
Well, and it's not just Los Angeles, but high-crime neighborhoods are wonderful. People that live in some of these neighborhoods, but unfortunately, they're also terrorized by gangs and all of the criminal elements, so it's not just L.A. In fact, it's high-crime neighborhoods.
Absolutely. And, you know, we, we, we wanted to do a little bit of a comparison with some of our border cities and other cities regionally that, that we compare pretty closely with. So we looked at these seven cities in comparison to Glendale and saw that we're only second behind Irvine in terms of our safety ranking, which is, is very, very good. Interesting, as, as the city manager indicated, when you look at sworn staffing ratios, the average sworn staffing ratio of these cities is one-point-six per thousand. Glendale is at one-point-two per thousand, and so to match the average staffing ratio, we'd have to add seventy sworn officers to our, our staffing. And, and Los Angeles is at two-point-five per thousand. To match their staffing ratio, we'd have to add two-hundred-and-fifty officers. So I think it's, it's really illustrative of the fact that we do a very efficient job here of policing a very, very large city, and can be proud of that.
And in keeping officers where we need them to be in terms of on the street, so our tooth-to-tail ratio is much better than what you're gonna find in other, other communities.
What do you say to the critics who say, "Since we're doing so well, we ought to cut our police force"?
Well, I, I think it's very important that we maintain this, this level of safety, and it, it's through the hard work and effort of, of our staff, day in and day out, that are carrying quite a significant burden. I think any changes to that would have significant consequences down the road.
You're understaffed right now, correct?
Well, comparatively speaking, as I, as I mentioned, when you look at our, our neighboring jurisdictions, we're significantly lower, yet we enjoy a better safety ranking and, and crime rate. And so that says a lot about our staff and, and the job that, that, that they do. But we've also asked them to do more with less for a long period of time, and, and you can only stretch them so far and, and run them so hard before it makes a difference.
What about white collar?
Well, it, we, you know, we are facing some significant shifts in crime, not only here in Glendale, but, but regionally, and certainly with the, with realignment. Now, there's a, there's a design focus away from violent crime and more towards property crime, to include white-collar crime and fraud and identity theft. As we look at these numbers, the one crime category that we are up in is identity theft, and we're up fourteen percent there. So, so we are seeing a shift in patterns in, in that regard, just because the consequences now with realignment are significantly less. But nonetheless, these are complex investigations, they are manpower-intensive, they take a lot of work, and we just have to remain diligent if we want to retain the level of safety that, that we currently enjoy.
It's, it's interesting, it's interesting, at least one council candidate in Los Angeles wants to add two thousand more police to the force, with no money, of course.
Well, and, and, and certainly, you know, public safety in municipal government is, is...
Oh, I didn't say anything.
Chief, aren't you though, you're, you have fifteen unfilled positions that you are gonna be hiring, correct?
That is correct.
So we will have fifteen new officers on the street?
Currently, actually, we have thirteen vacancies currently.
Thirteen?
Yes, and, and we're in the process of hiring for those right now.
So those ratios will change a little bit when those are filled?
Well, actually, the...
Does that include that?
The ratios I'm talking about is, is authorized positions, not, not what is actually staffed.
Right, but in any case, we're gonna be adding thirteen officers, so that's some good news.
Yes, we are, and, and that will, that will be a great help for us to be able to get those vacancies filled.
That, that's what I was asking you, I guess I didn't ask the question right. You want your authorized ceiling.
We absolutely, it's very important for us to, to keep those vacancies filled, but as I've mentioned to you before, that's a long-term process, and we're looking at about a minimum of an eighteen-month process to get a full-functioning officer filled in a vacancy, or in a vacant position. So it, it takes time. Looking at, at our national rankings, we're, we're very proud of this. This is, this is the first one to come out based on 2012 data, and it's by the Congressional Quarterly Press, and they look at Part One crimes. They, they modify it a little bit and take out petty larceny because they feel that really skews the crime rate in, in, in a direction that is not favorable to, to those municipalities that have big retail centers. So they'd make a minor adjustment there, but nonetheless, we're, we're in the top ten for cities of a hundred thousand to close to a half-million, and that's a total of two-hundred-and-forty-four cities, so again, we, we finish very, very well on, on the national level. But again, this, there are challenges to this, to staying here. Certainly, we need to be mindful of the fact that realignment and prison reform will continue to represent significant challenges. Certainly in the area, we are, we are daily combating criminal street gangs that would love to get a foothold back in Glendale. Certainly, we have an organized crime element that, that breeds fraud and identity theft and those types of, of challenges. So it's not gonna be easy to maintain this type of status, but I think the most important thing we can do is continue to forge our strong partnerships with city council, and, and this council has been tremendously supportive and held public safety as the highest priority, with our community. We have a community here in Glendale that, that truly cares. And I tell you, when, whatever the issue has been, wherever it has been, we've had community leaders step up to the plate and, and work with us on changing those conditions in the community that invite crime. And then our rank and file, you know, we could not do any of this if we didn't have a, a willing and capable rank and file that are, are willing to go out there, day in and day out, and, and fight the good fight. So I think our effort as we go forward is, is, is to continue to strengthen those partnerships and, and to utilize them to the, to the full advantage. So we wanted to share that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond to them.
Mr. Najarian?
Thank you, chief. Tell us again how you see the relationship between the police force, the department, and council.
I, I think our, our relationship is, is very good. I think it's very open, it's very transparent. I think the council has done a wonderful job over, well, I've been here thirty-six years, and, and as far as I can remember, historically, the city council has always held public safety as the highest priority in this community, and we've always had great support to that end. But again, it's been very, very transparent. I think the council makes it very clear as to what priorities and goals and objectives we need to focus on, and it's been a good working relationship.
I've seen communities where the relationship between the police department and the council is not so cooperative.
As, as have I.
And I think that, that leads to many issues such as morale, such as, such as the motivation of the officers to go out and do a good job. Is there anything that you would ask of council at this point? Anything that we can do better in terms of supporting the department and keeping this a safe community?
You know, I, I, I think obviously actions speak louder than words, and I think this is a, a council that's been willing to take the tough actions to support what we do in the community or need to do in the community to keep it safe, and certainly some of those policy directions are not always popular, and they're not always gonna make everybody happy, but I, I think, I think our people see that, our employees understand that, that I think there's a clear sense of where your priorities lie. And I think that, and coupled with the fact that you're willing to acknowledge and, and recognize a, a job well-done by our employees goes a long way and, and has helped to forge the good relationships that we enjoy. But for those good relationships and that strong partnership, it'd be very difficult to bring these type of results to you year after year.
Well, I want to tell you, chief, I do appreciate your efforts, your command staff, the patrol officers that are out there. It is one of the things that I brag about when I go to other cities, that Glendale is one of the safest cities in the nation, as, as we can see now, and we have some other good qualities as well. We have a Bloomingdale's coming in, and that's, that takes care of some other interests, but it is certainly one of the, the top priorities, and I'm, I'm very glad to hear this report from you.
Just one comment I'd like to make, having lived here all my life, between what our fire department does for us in terms of safety and saving lives, and what the police do in keeping it a safe city, and I don't know why anybody would want to live in any other city with what we see from both you and the fire. I mean, it's just kind of unheard of.
It truly is, and I think it's really the foundation to the quality of life that, that is unique and that we enjoy in Glendale. I think it's a very different community.
Just keep it up and get the thirteen on board.
We'll work on it.
Mr. Friedman?
Well, public safety is my highest priority, and because of that, I want to thank you and commend you for your leadership and all of the work that you've done, and certainly all of the men and women who work in the police department, because they're out there each and every day doing a great job.
They are.
And I hear from the public, you know, quite a bit about the feeling that they have that they are in a very safe community, and they also appreciate the work of the police department and all of the officers and, and both sworn and non-sworn people who work in the police department. So, so congratulations, I'm really glad to hear this news and that crime is continuing to trend downward, and, you know, as we can see, it's not the case in every city and not the case in cities around us. So you are definitely doing something very, very right. So, thank you so much.
You very much.
I will also thank the department for the work that they do.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Mayor, I'll move eight B1, but a question. Where was Surprise, Arizona?
I'm sorry?
Surprise, Arizona.
Surprise, don't tell them.
I think it's a suburb of Phoenix, probably.
Is it?
Yeah.
So?
Yeah.
Spring training? It's in Surprise, Arizona? Yeah, in the Phoenix area, then, suburb.
You know, the other thing about those rankings of being in the top ten is, it's not a ranking, you know, sometimes you'll see these rankings where it's population of a hundred to a hundred-and-ten, and a hundred-and-twenty to a hundred-and-thirty. This is a hundred thousand to five-hundred thousand. This is a very wide, large sample that we're in the top ten of, so...
Two-hundred-and-forty-four cities.
And, you know, of course, it's, it's not just the police, but I have to say it's the people of Glendale. people of Glendale too. We are a...
Absolutely.
People choose to live here because they are law-abiding.
Absolutely.
And that's the kind of community that they want, so I think it's something that everyone in the community can be proud of.
Absolutely, it's great to have partners out there that work with us day in and day out.
And seriously, no three cities ahead of us in California are relatively new cities.
That's very true, and very bedroom in their characteristics.
I move 8B1.
I have a motion.
Second?
Well, I feel the same way, chief, and specifically, the good job that you've done since you've taken over. There were issues in the police department that developed over time, but when you became the chief, one by one, you've been taking care of them, and I think that's part of the package, more than just statistics, what you've done to bring the morale up in the department and to take care of the things that needed to be taken care of, so.
Thank you.
A roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
Next is oral communication. This is the full five-minute portion. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker will be allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and the city manager may refer to the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
I have two cards, Tony Passarella, followed by Ann, I think it's Novell? Norde, N-O-R-D.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and viewing public. My name is Tony Passarella. 10th safest city out of 244, that's pretty good, and no homicides in 2012, and we want to shut down the gun show for what, for why? Anyway, I have a media presentation. Art, if you can get close to 2:50, that'd be great.
To what?
Two minutes, 2:30, I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm not sure as to why the audio is not on, but...
Well, fluoride, silic, sand, and it's missing an electron, it's acidic. It'll kill you. You take your hand dipping in like that, you're going to die. And it eats through concrete, glass, stainless steel, fiberglass, plastic, you name it, it'll eat it. So, why are we putting that in the water?
The chemical was so strong that it was burning through the concrete there. News eight's Kristy Mergenthal has the latest.
It was just before 1 o'clock Thursday afternoon when hazmat crews were called to the Rock Island Water Treatment Plant for a chemical spill coming from this tanker truck. The chemical hydrofluorosacilic acid is used to add fluoride to the plant's water. After several hours, crews were able to clean up the leak, allowing operations to return to normal.
Your body has no known use for fluoride. It's a poison, it's a xenobiotic, it's like lead or any other deadly poison. You know, a little bit poisons a little bit, a lot more poisons a lot more.
You know, mercury, at least, it's voluntary, you know, you get a filling, they might not know, but in the case of the fluoride, it's being given to us whether we like it or not. So, the countries now that have banned the use of fluoride, China, Austria, Belgium, Finland, Germany, Denmark, Norway, Sweden, the Netherlands, Hungary, and Japan, all these countries have said that fluoride, number one, is ineffective and toxic and should not be used. We are still using it, there's something wrong here, and I think it's time that we become aware and do something about it.
The use of the public water supply to deliver medicine, it's pretty bizarre when you think about it. Once you put a medicine in the drinking water, you can't control the dose, because you can't control how much water people drink, you can't control who gets it, it goes to everybody. If you ask a pharmacist if there's any drug in his store that was safe enough to give to everyone, young people, old people, sick people, people with poor nutrition, give it to them in any dose, they'd laugh at you, it's ridiculous. There's no way you can give out a medicine without being able to control the dose, and one dose cannot fit all, and you can't give a medicine to everybody.
I'm objecting to being compelled to take medication.
You object to take table salt?
I wouldn't object in that case, but I do object to this rat poison being shoved into my water.
Right now, you know, dentists and dental researchers are really starting to take a closer look at this fluoride experiment of the last 50 years, and the research that's emerging is drawing increasing concern, which is why legislators in Tennessee and other places like Calgary are calling to end and ban fluoridation altogether.
Yeah, I remember when they were, you know, putting fluoride to space when I was a youngster, and, you know, everybody was just told, "It's good for you," but it's not.
There's so many things wrong with fluoridation, it's very hard to find something right about it.
We've got to wake up, it's not working, and it's causing damage, and in addition to the synergistic effect, that is, the fluoride molecule here, a aluminum molecule there, a mercury molecule here, together creates a lot of hazards in our body.
I imagine there's at least a few people at home that are hearing this information for the very first time. Pretty shocking, but yes, in fact, you've been duped, you've been fooled, you've been hypnotized, you've been hoaxed, you've been lied to. And it's time, you know, great city, safe city, I've heard this over and over and over again, it's time we get this stuff out of the water. And if you people on council aren't going to do it, step up and do something, we're going to need to fill those chairs with somebody that will do something about this. Thank you.
Ann Norde.
Evening, Mayor, council, and city staff. My name is Ann Norde, I'm a Glendale resident for 14 years and a parent of two children who go to Glen Oaks Elementary School. I've never spoken to city council before, but I feel very strongly about this issue, and despite my nerves, I'm here to let you know how I feel about the gun show. I'm also an active member in my children's school, as well as serve on the board of the foundation and volunteer for the PTA. I'm here to speak to you as a concerned parent and a concerned Glendale resident about the Glendale Gun Show. I spoke earlier today to the Board of Education and had a very warm reception there, and also heard Sergeant Loren speak about the gun show and the security measures that have been, that are taking place for that. Gun shows should never be near schools. When I first moved to Glendale and saw the signs for the gun show that was so close to schools, I didn't know that I, as a citizen, could do anything or say anything about it. And so, I'm here to speak on behalf of myself. I've also recently have joined a coalition, Coalition for a Better Glendale Cabbage. I've never also joined a coalition before, but again, I feel so strongly about this issue that I want to get involved and have my voice heard. I urge you, the city council, to please act on what you know to be the best action for our community, that the most important thing we should be focused on now is the safety of our children in our community and to know that they feel safe. I know that an ordinance is being drafted and will be voted on in March, and I hope that you vote in favor of banning gun shows from city property and from being so close to schools. Additionally, I just realized today, someone mentioned that March 2nd is opening day for Little League in Glendale. All parks, specifically Verdugo Park and Babe Herman, will be very busy with hundreds of childrens and their family coming, celebrating Little League opening day, and I know that public parking around the civic center and the college is a premium, and, you know, I don't know if there'll be issues that will come up regarding that. Thank you for your time and for listening to me.
That's the final card, any comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn in honor of Madeline Sardo?
We have new business?
Let me just, if I could, what I'll do is I'll just report it out, and I do apologize. Thank you, Mrs. Friedman. With respect to the item, there was an item on the agenda at item...
It was 1B.
1B.
Conference with legal counsel pending litigation, Government Code Section 5495 6.9A, Hartford Fire Insurance Company versus City of Glendale.
And on that item, the council has directed that the city attorney settle that matter for $145,000 in addition to payment of the retention. So, with that, I'd ask that that be the motion made.
So moved.
Second. We are, roll call.
House members Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
And now I move ahead.
Yes. In memory of Madeline Sardo.
We are, sir.
Thank you.